Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning, September 24th at 9:07 a.m. And before the meeting begins, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit it to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on the agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Present.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Present.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry Legrand.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Mary Solis. Mary Solis. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Bloss Villa Lobos. Joseph Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum. President Costa.
Thank you. Can you let the record note that board member Solis is here? I see her, and I think her Wi-Fi was just a little bit spotty. Colleagues, I have a unique circumstance this morning, which is that we have a request by trustee Legrand to appear remotely due to an emergency circumstance. Board member Legrand, is that accurate?
Thank you, President Costa. Yes, a health emergency arose yesterday that prevents me from attending in person today.
Thank you so much. I have to ask a series of questions just to make sure that we're compliant with the law. Trustee Legrand, are there any individuals 18 years of age or older who are present in the room with you? And if so, what is the general nature of your relationship with these individuals?
I have all the moment.
Thank you. Is there any trustee comment on this item?
If there's not, then I would like to move that we accept trustee Legrande.
Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, can we please...
There is... Oh, sorry. There is no public comment.
Thank you, Teri. Seeing none, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Harry... Oh. Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis. Mary Solis. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos. And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Appreciate it. Now, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask our colleague trustee Brown to lead us.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Trustees, does anybody have any discussion regarding the order of our agenda? Seeing none, we will just go ahead and dive in. We'll start with my report, the president's report, and as always, I will keep it pithy and brief. Yesterday, we talked a lot about the importance of infrastructure in our tour of San Bernardino Valley College, as well as some of the items that we had on our agenda. And I think what I find so thrilling about Calbright, really, is that we're building a different type of infrastructure with Calbright. That's really phenomenal. And we have a couple of items, but I think, you know, we're really at a very interesting point in our society for many different reasons. But policymakers are starting to get really interested in AI and what that means and what the government's role should be in AI. Clearly, that'll be transformative for our students, for our workforce, and for the future of work as a whole. And I continue to be really excited about Calbright's work, which is really on the precipice of this convergence of technology and what it means for our workforce. And so I'm just excited, as always, to hear more about the work, because I really do believe, and I've always believed, that Calbright can serve as a model, not only for the state but for the country, about what is the new model of providing services to students. With that, I'll turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you. And good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. First, I will start by saying it is wonderful to be in San Bernardino and back in the IE this week, connecting with various leaders across the region, discussing Calbright's work and its impact. The Inland Empire represents the second-largest region where our students reside. The Inland Empire is also just a critical economic hub for the rest of the state. And while we're seeing this increased gap between workforce demand and skilled workers in this area, this also presents really strong opportunities for us to lean in, to collaborate, and also to support the great work and the committed leadership that we already see in the region. This is not a new challenge facing this community, but it's one that Calbright was founded to expressly solve for. Calbright's unique delivery model is built to be both responsive to the needs of employers and the needs of learners across California who are seeking to upskill and reskill. Most importantly, it's built to ensure that our state and regions stay resilient and competitive. Yesterday, I had the privilege of meeting with Paul Grineo, President and CEO of the Inland Empire Economic Partnership, Regina Brown Wilson from California Black Media, Connie Leva, Executive Director of KVCR, and Jesse Melgar, Inland Empire Community Foundation Board Member, to highlight and discuss how we forge a stronger bond among education, economic development, and workforce in the IE. And today, our government relations team is also leaning into this work in attending the Inland Empire Economic Partnership's Latino Economic and Policy Summit. In the same vein, our team recently returned from Monterey, where we were sponsored and participated in the California Workforce Association's Meeting of the Minds. This convening brings together higher education and workforce development leaders from across the state to share best practices and collaborate across sectors to strengthen our workforce. Calbright's workforce strategy and innovation team presented on critical topics ranging from optimizing the public sector labor market to designing human-centered innovations that make it easier for job seekers to connect with resources they need to succeed in the labor market and for employers to connect with in-demand talent. I had the pleasure of participating in a panel discussion with our partners at NextGen Policy to discuss the benefits of a statewide public sector apprenticeship hub. The U.S. Department of Labor recently awarded NextGen with a grant to establish a statewide registered apprenticeship hub. And as a collaboration partner, Calbright is excited to work with the apprenticeship hub directly to address workforce gaps by promoting and expanding apprenticeship opportunities for underserved Californians with NextGen Policy, the Institute for Local Government, and the Clover Agency at the helm. California has the potential to be the leader in this space, and for us, we see this hub as one step in building a stronger playbook on a place we're focused, which is how to strategically shift skills-based hiring for public sector careers in a more equitable manner. We need to pilot and test new ways of collaborating between higher ed and the public sector to unlock opportunities for working-age adults that result in good-paying jobs. This is critical, because at the heart of Calbright's mission is the need to invest in adult learners. And as Calbright grows, we continue to collaborate with workforce development partners, but also leaders like the Axiom Collaborative and UC Irvine School of Education and Ideas 42 to really accelerate innovation and leverage new approaches to adult learner success. And you're going to hear more about this work from Calbright's Vice President of Sustainable Growth and Development, Marissa Bold, who will share updates later in the meeting regarding our UC Irvine work to advance student progress and to focus on more equitable outcomes for our learners. Now, you've heard me say consistently that we must recognize that adult learners require education models that can mold to their goals and their needs, not the other way around. And that's why we're partnering with like-minded technologists, researchers, and educators to accelerate the progress, specifically to create a stronger pipeline to careers so that the largest number of students can benefit. Calbright is thrilled to engage around another track for the Learning Engineering Tools Competition with our partners at Axiom Collaborative, Schmidt Futures, and more. This year's post-secondary track is focused on bridging the gap between learning and career goals to support underserved learners while also strengthening today's workforce. Building on last year's success, Calbright continues to serve as a leader in advancing innovation for our students, this time with both returning and new philanthropic partners to broaden the competition's impact. And as was the case with last year's competition, we would be grateful for the board to uplift and share the opportunity within your networks. Last year, with your help, Calbright's Tools Competition Track received an extraordinary 340 submissions, a majority of which were first-time applicants. And we continue to collaborate with the 2023-2024 Tools Competition winners, and will share more updates on the specific efforts with the implementation winners, which were Wingsman and AI Tutor at an upcoming board meeting. So not only is this a competition that serves Calbright students, the community college system, and the 6.8 million working Californians without a degree, but it's also going to advance the learning sciences field and support scaling solutions for more than 40 million working-age adults nationwide with some college but no degree. And these are really breakthrough areas that are at the heart of what we're focused on at Calbright, to continue evolving how we educate and support adult learners through new learning experiences that are advancing an adult learner's individual knowledge and skills while also empowering them to succeed in the workplace on day one. I wanted to close by also thanking San Bernardino District Chancellor Diana Rodriguez, San Bernardino Valley College President Gilbert Contreras, and their teams for hosting us on their wonderful campus. Thank you to President Costa, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. I also failed to mention that I understand the culinary arts students were in charge of our beautiful breakfast this morning. I just want to thank them. It was awesome. Again, the hospitality extended to us by the district and the college are second to none, so thank you so much. Next up is the closed session portion of our agenda. Is there any members of the public that wish to comment on our closed session items?
There are no raised hands, President Costa, no public comment.
Great. Well, we're going to recess from our open session and go into closed session, and we're anticipating it's going to take a little over an hour or so, and then we'll reconvene at that time. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We are reconvening in our open session. I don't have any reportable items coming out of our closed session. With that, I want to move along to Section 3 of our agenda, the consent portion. Do any trustees wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? Not seeing anyone with their hand raised. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment.
Great. Thank you. With that, colleagues, I'll take a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Williams with the motion, Chang with the second. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, we're going to move on to Section 4, the action portion of our agenda. First up is Item 4.1, which is approval of the appointment of General Counsel. We have our Vice President of Human Resources here, but before he begins, I have a statement to read. The Board of Trustees of Calbright College is happy to announce the selection of Wanda Daniel as General Counsel of Calbright. The Board of Trustees will now vote on the appointment of Ms. Daniel. Under California law, as the Board President, I am obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of the appointment and their values. Once I announce the monetary provisions of the appointment and the associated values, we will have a board discussion and public comment on this item. Then, the Board of Trustees will vote on the appointment. The terms of the General Counsel appointment include: appointment on an annual basis beginning on October 1st of 2024; an annual salary of $235,539.60; leave rights consistent with all other Calbright administrative employees; membership and CalPERS and related employer contribution as set by statute; health benefits as currently offered to current administrative employees. With that, is there any... Would you like to present before we discuss?
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, members of the board. I'm delighted today to bring this request forward to you. This item is to request approval and appointment of Wanda Daniel as General Counsel. Wanda came to us with a solid background in both public sector work and in higher education. She was selected through the interview process and came out as a candidate of a very strong applicant pool, so I'm delighted to have Wanda here today and to recommend her hire.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great. With that, colleagues, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
I have Perry with the motion, Rawlings with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, we're going to move on to Section 4, the action portion of our agenda. First up is Item 4.1, which is approval of the appointment of General Counsel. We have our Vice President of Human Resources here, but before he begins, I have a statement to read. The Board of Trustees of Calbright College is happy to announce the selection of Wanda Daniel as General Counsel of Calbright. The Board of Trustees will now vote on the appointment of Ms. Daniel. Under California law, as the Board President, I am obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of the appointment and their values. Once I announce the monetary provisions of the appointment and the associated values, we will have a board discussion and public comment on this item. Then, the Board of Trustees will vote on the appointment. The terms of the General Counsel appointment include: appointment on an annual basis beginning on October 1st of 2024; an annual salary of $235,539.60; leave rights consistent with all other Calbright administrative employees; membership and CalPERS and related employer contribution as set by statute; health benefits as currently offered to current administrative employees. With that, is there any... Would you like to present before we discuss?
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, members of the board. I'm delighted today to bring this request forward to you. This item is to request approval and appointment of Wanda Daniel as General Counsel. Wanda came to us with a solid background in both public sector work and in higher education. She was selected through the interview process and came out as a candidate of a very strong applicant pool, so I'm delighted to have Wanda here today and to recommend her hire.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great. With that, colleagues, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
I have Perry with the motion, Rawlings with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving along in the action section of our agenda, we invite up our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, Shannon McCarty. We have Item 4.3, which is approve the First Amendment to Software Design and Subscription Agreement with Skillways Incorporated.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the board. I'm Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction, and today I am here seeking board approval to amend the current EAS Learning and Skillways agreement. In January of this year, I sought approval for the Software Design and Subscription Agreement between Calbright and EAS Learning. This agreement included access to a content management system, Skillways, which extends the functionality of our new learning management system, Canvas, and also provided additional funds to support the migration of content and assessment from the previous learning management system to the new systems. I am happy to report that the Learning and Instruction team has been hard at work, not only moving content but updating the mapping and tagging of skills across all of our programs. And I'm happy to announce we've also migrated program content and launched two of our programs in Canvas, data analysis, and cybersecurity, with IT support and all the other programs scheduled to follow in October and November. To add a little context to the Skillways value and functionality, the platform's functionality actually enables granular mapping and tracking of skills to individual assessment questions in content. This functionality allows Calbright to personalize the learning journey, only guiding students to content and practice that they have not learned, and to allow them to advance in their program at a faster rate than a traditional model. During the migration process, Calbright has expedited the mapping of skills across all of its programs. And while Learning and Instruction originally anticipated the work to be done during Year Two of the contract, due to technical efficiencies and investment by the LNI team and a strong collaboration between Skillways and Calbright, we have been able to expedite the work during Year One. And Calbright is asking to approve an amendment to the current agreement and shift funds for design services from Years Two and Three to Year One. Our goal is to fully execute the mapping and the personalized model across all programs, allowing us to support the learners sooner rather than later. Calbright is also requesting a modification of the not-to-exceed amounts. The original contract included authorized annual not-to-exceed amounts for Year One, Year Two, and Year Three. However, we are requesting to modify from these three separate annual amounts to... Excuse me, from $547,300 in Year One, $475 in Year Two, and $475 in Year Three, to the $1.4973,000 for the subscription term through June 30th of 2027, with no change in the total amount to be authorized. And this will provide Calbright the flexibility in the future to leverage funds as needed to support software design, improvements in the user interface, or design services earlier in the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item?
There are no public comments.
Great. With that, I'll take a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
I have Perry with the motion, Chang with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Ricardo D. La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving along in the action section of our agenda, we invite up our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, Shannon McCarty. We have Item 4.3, which is approve the First Amendment to Software Design and Subscription Agreement with Skillways Incorporated.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the board. I'm Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction, and today I am here seeking board approval to amend the current EAS Learning and Skillways agreement. In January of this year, I sought approval for the Software Design and Subscription Agreement between Calbright and EAS Learning. This agreement included access to a content management system, Skillways, which extends the functionality of our new learning management system, Canvas, and also provided additional funds to support the migration of content and assessment from the previous learning management system to the new systems. I am happy to report that the Learning and Instruction team has been hard at work, not only moving content but updating the mapping and tagging of skills across all of our programs. And I'm happy to announce we've also migrated program content and launched two of our programs in Canvas, data analysis, and cybersecurity, with IT support and all the other programs scheduled to follow in October and November. To add a little context to the Skillways value and functionality, the platform's functionality actually enables granular mapping and tracking of skills to individual assessment questions in content. This functionality allows Calbright to personalize the learning journey, only guiding students to content and practice that they have not learned, and to allow them to advance in their program at a faster rate than a traditional model. During the migration process, Calbright has expedited the mapping of skills across all of its programs. And while Learning and Instruction originally anticipated the work to be done during Year Two of the contract, due to technical efficiencies and investment by the LNI team and a strong collaboration between Skillways and Calbright, we have been able to expedite the work during Year One. And Calbright is asking to approve an amendment to the current agreement and shift funds for design services from Years Two and Three to Year One. Our goal is to fully execute the mapping and the personalized model across all programs, allowing us to support the learners sooner rather than later. Calbright is also requesting a modification of the not-to-exceed amounts. The original contract included authorized annual not-to-exceed amounts for Year One, Year Two, and Year Three. However, we are requesting to modify from these three separate annual amounts to... Excuse me, from $547,300 in Year One, $475 in Year Two, and $475 in Year Three, to the $1.4973,000 for the subscription term through June 30th of 2027, with no change in the total amount to be authorized. And this will provide Calbright the flexibility in the future to leverage funds as needed to support software design, improvements in the user interface, or design services earlier in the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Remember Epstein?
I just want to say I've been on these boards for 10 years, and I can't recall another time when a contract got done sooner rather than later. So congratulations on everybody on the team who did that.
Yeah, it's the team. They did a great job.
I just wanted to say congratulations as well.
Great. Thanks, colleagues. Any public comments on Item 4.3?
There are no public comments.
Great. With that, I'll take a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Seeing none, is there any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment.
We're on a roll, folks. With that, I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo?
Aye.
Adrian Brown?
Aye.
Casey Chang?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa?
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg?
Aye.
Pamela Haynes?
Aye.
Perry LeGrand?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Mary Salas?
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio?
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we're on Section 5 of the agenda, our information and reports. And first up, we have item 5.1, which our CEO referenced in her report. This is an update on Calbright University of California-Irvine partnership, and we have our Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development, Marissa Bold, presenting, and she will introduce a couple other guest presenters.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. I'm Marissa Bold, Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development. We are here today, as President Costa said, to share an update on the work in progress with our Calbright-UCI partnership, including partners from Ideas42. The work is in full swing and really embodies the framing President Costa and President Menon shared at the beginning of the meeting, accelerating innovation, piloting and testing how education models can mold to the needs of their students, and Calbright serving as a model of providing services to students in service of equitable outcomes. We are about halfway through this five-year partnership that is deeply aligned to Calbright's--oh, next slide, please. We are about halfway through this five-year partnership that is deeply aligned to Calbright's mission and strategic vision. For a quick moment of context for those who may not have been with us before and just to ground us in the work, this is highly collaborative and action-oriented work focused on applying data and behavioral science strategies to inform new and responsive approaches to how we support our focus population of working adult learners, how we design with their needs at the center, and how we serve them especially well. This work continues to put Calbright at the forefront of innovating in this space, is designed intentionally to expand our internal capacity to rapidly design, test, and iterate in a student and equity-centered way, and to generate and share evidence of effective approaches more broadly to improve educational and career outcomes for working adults. The Calbright-UCI and Ideas42 teams have been working closely together since we visited with the board in January, and we're excited to be joined today by some now familiar faces for many of us, including Tom Tash from Ideas42, our leads from UCI, Professors DiJoo and Richard Arum, and Ben Castleman from Nudge4 Labs and UVA. Next slide, please. Today, we're going to share exciting results from some of the latest pilot tests we've been running and updates on past pilots we've shared with the board, and we wanted to highlight a few framing takeaways. First, as we said before, equally as exciting as the impact of the specific pilots we'll highlight today is the process itself. We view the pilots as proof points for the power of the approach we're taking to using data and behavioral science in this context-sensitive way to improve student outcomes, and not just as validation for the particular ideas we've tested so far, despite our enthusiasm for those ideas. A second key takeaway is the internal capacity we're building. This approach has become core to how we do our work at Calbright, and team members across the college are engaged deeply and truly leading the way. We're identifying and solving problems in new ways, listening deeply to student perspectives, using data to pilot test and inform solutions, and then scaling and sharing out what works and learning from and adapting where it doesn't. And finally, in light of the strong results we've seen so far, we've accelerated the work, launching more pilots, continuing to prioritize internal capacity building, and increasing the focus on thought leadership and sharing insights with the broader field, where I just wanted to note, we've sought out opportunities to share and also where others have come to our teams as leaders in the space, lifting up the power of this work. We're excited to dive in and share more examples of the work with you today, and as always, promise to come back with more updates and opportunities for engagement along the journey of the partnership. With that, if we can move to the next slide, I will hand it over to our partner, Tom, who will be sharing with us today, and all of our leads for the work will be available throughout as well.
All right. Thank you so much for that introduction, Marissa. And I'll start by saying it's a real privilege to be able to come before the board today as spokesperson for this highly collaborative and highly cross-functional partnership. We are excited to share some highlights from the work over the past few months, but before we do so, I want to begin with a huge thank you to the many members, the Calbright faculty, staff, leadership team, who've contributed time, energy, talent to this work. Everything you see today really is the result of what's been a real team effort. Now, to organize the contents of this update, I want to start off with this visual up here, which I know we've shared a few times before. It's sort of the organizing arc for everything we're doing across the partnership, which is all about working collaboratively with Calbright to co-design, pilot, scale, and then spread the word about new approaches that can improve outcomes for Calbright's focus population of working adult learners. And as Marissa mentioned, we're particularly excited to dig into the latest wave of pilot test results that we've got. But similar to our previous updates to the board, we're doing so less as a way of showing you one particular intervention and more as a proof point for the effectiveness of the approach as a whole. Now, we're going to spend most of our time today at the early end of this arc on the left-hand side, showcasing new designs, new pilot results. But toward the end, we'll also provide some updates on activities further along the arc related to our efforts to scale and disseminate work we've previously shared with the board. Next slide, please. So let's dive into those pilot results that we've mentioned a few times here, and I've said are going to be the main focus. This time, we want to spotlight an approach we tested earlier this year that came out of one of those collaborative design sprints we've been running with different teams at Calbright. We ran this particular sprint with a group of faculty and staff involved with the IT Support Program, Calbright's largest program. We went deeper on the design sprint approach in a previous update to the board, but as a quick reminder, design sprints provide a kind of scaffolding for us to co-design new ways of supporting learners in collaboration with Calbright faculty and staff. I'll just say two things up top here about the design sprint approach today. The first is that its defining feature is very much in line with what Marissa just teed up, and that's its student-centered nature. Now, at all stages of the process, we really privilege student voice as the guiding force in our design thinking. And the second thing I want to say about design sprints is that while the initial brainstorming begins in smaller teams, once we actually identify a concept to pilot, they very quickly become highly cross-functional efforts, engaging teams throughout and across the college. Next slide, please. Now, we began this particular sprint by identifying the opportunity that you see on the screen here. That is to help students in Calbright's IT Support Program complete more challenging assignments that were associated with higher rates of stop-out or drop-off. Now, we know the importance of helping students establish a strong start in their programs when it comes to persistence, and we wanted to come up with ways to offer more targeted support as students approached some of the trickier technical assignments early on, things we know can trip them up. Next slide, please. So we dug into the data from the learning management system to try to pinpoint spots where we saw students getting tripped up that way, you know, looking for assignments where students spent the most time or needed multiple attempts to complete, and maybe most importantly, the assignments where larger numbers of students were stalling or at worst, stopping out. Now, there were some clear patterns in the data that revealed three points early on in the program pathway that were good opportunities for a more robust intervention to help students out. But knowing where students were getting stuck was only the first step. Next slide, please. Now, once we identified those three challenge points, we worked with Calbright's Learning Services team to develop a model of peer-assisted study sessions, or PASS as we came to call them, that offered structured synchronous support where it was most needed. Now, the goal of these workshops was straightforward. You know, in the space of one hour, students could sign on and with direct guidance from a peer tutor recruited and trained by Calbright, complete the target assignments in a small group setting. Now, one of the key words I want to underline up here is proactive. Now, we sort of flipped the on-demand model of most tutoring services on its head with this approach. You know, instead of waiting for students to run into difficulty, identify their own need for help, and then seek out support, we preemptively invited them to join a workshop as they neared the target assignments. And using real-time data from the learning management system, we were able to send targeted emails and texts inviting students to attend upcoming workshops. And we could effectively say to students, hey, you're about to hit a tougher assignment, but don't worry, we've got your back. Now, drop into one of these upcoming workshops, and you can knock that assignment out in an hour. Next slide, please. Now, each of these workshops was, to some extent, tailored to the specific content of the assignment in question, but they all featured a few common elements. Now, first, we gave students an overview of the assignment instructions. We discussed the learning objectives and outcomes, and then tried to get ahead of common questions students might have based on past experience. The second, we made space for peer tutors and students to create tips and ask questions. Now, here we could bring some pre-specified strategies that we'd prepared in advance, while also making space for a more organic exchange among participants. And third, we concluded sessions by raising awareness around next steps and prompting some plan-making, in particular, highlighting other supportive services and resources, including future workshops that they might be able to attend. Now, as I mentioned, we ran a pilot of these past workshops in early 2024 to see how they actually work for Calbright students. So I want to turn now to what we actually found. Next slide, please. And we'll start here with some of the direct participant feedback. Students told us how the workshops boosted their confidence, feelings of connectedness, overall excitement about their Calbright program, all of which very much validated many of the assumptions that went into the design of the workshops in the first place. Now, up here, we've pulled out some quotes from interviews conducted with students who attended workshops during the pilot, and in their own words, "It was nice to build self-confidence, enjoyable, knowledgeable, no wasting time, loved the energy of it." Or, "It helped me because it gave me reassurance that I'm on the right track, helped me find support when I need it." And finally, "I wanted to see where everyone else was. The social interaction relit the fire." Now, taken together, these testimonials speak to the multifaceted value that students found in these past workshops, now whether that was peer connection, self-efficacy, or greater awareness of resources. Next slide, please. But beyond, you know, that anecdotal feedback from students, we were also interested in more quantitative outcomes related to student persistence. And as with our previous pilots, we implemented these past workshops through a randomized framework that allowed us to assess the extent to which offering students the chance to participate in the workshops could actually help them progress through their programs. So up on the screen here, we've laid out the increases in assignment completion rates for students in our pilot group compared to a control group that was not offered the workshops. Now, these two groups of students were similar in all respects, except that those in the pilot group received the targeted outreach inviting them to attend a pass workshop, which means we can be pretty confident that these differences are a result of the workshops and not something else. And what we saw was very encouraging, what you see on the screen here. On the left side in that lighter blue shade, we see that offering the workshops to students resulted in a boost of 11% to 40% in terms of completion rates for the three assignments that each of those workshops targeted. And on the far right in that darker blue, we've got the same figure for the performance-based assessment for the overall lesson containing those target assignments, which shows us that offering students the workshops led to 25% more of them mastering the relevant competencies and successfully completing the lesson. Next slide, please. I think those results on their own are very compelling, but they're especially compelling when you consider the fact that only about 1 in 6 eligible students actually attended a workshop. Now, what we saw during the course of the pilot was that around 28% of students invited to attend a pass workshop signed up, and about 17% both signed up and actually attended at least one of our workshops. Now, in other words, all of that impact we just saw was driven by only 17% of eligible students actually attending a workshop. So, you know, just imagine what the figure would be if we could get 30% or 40% or even more students to show up at these past workshops. Be a pretty big impact. Next slide, please. And that's a big part of what the team is currently thinking about, is we try to scale these workshops more broadly across Calbright. First, by, you know, offering additional workshops for other assignments and in other programs, but second, by developing new ways to increase attendance, increase engagement with the workshops. Now, during the pilot, we were more constrained in how we could market the workshops in order to maintain that control group I mentioned. But now we can explore other avenues like posting announcements in Slack or adding language to the learning management system directly so that all students can see them and more easily access them. And finally, the Learning Services team is also at work developing some companion resources alongside the synchronous workshops, so that even students who aren't able to attend the live synchronous sessions can still hopefully capture some of the benefit. Next slide, please. So that wraps up what we wanted to share related to the past workshops. In the months ahead, you can look forward to updates on some future pilots that we've currently got in development. Now, that includes new weekly outreach tactics we're designing and testing with the Persistence Team, a new approach to peer learning communities that can help students establish a really strong start in the first month of their programs, and a new design sprint that we just launched last week with a cross-functional team. This one focused squarely on career services and workforce outcomes. All that to say, there is a lot more to come. A lot is in the works. Next slide, please. But beyond those new pilots, new results, as I mentioned at the top, we also wanted to share some updates on some of those later-stage activities in this arc of the partnership, you know, the activities at the further right of the screen related to scaling and engagement. And first up, we wanted to circle back on two different pilots that we previously shared some updates on with the board. Next slide, please. One of those being the pace and progress timelines that help students set and stick to target completion dates for their programs, and the second being the short-form videos we developed to help drive engagement with different supportive services at Calbright. On the timelines front, we hit the one-year anniversary of the launch of our initial pilot earlier this spring, which allowed us to evaluate for the first time some of the longer-term outcomes related not just to persistence, but importantly, completion. And what we saw was a very encouraging extension of the pattern we first reported to the board last year. Students in our pilot group who were offered a timeline were nearly twice as likely to have completed their program compared to a control group. That is a huge testament to the value of helping students structure their learning around their goals and lifestyles. On the videos front, meanwhile, the counseling team has rolled out short-form video intros on their initial outreach to new students in their caseload. And more broadly, the learnings from our different video pilots are being applied to the development of a new suite of 30- to 60-second videos that are being leveraged across the Calbright student journey to boost motivation, deepen connection, drive engagement, all in support of student success. Next slide, please. And finally, at the very far end of that arc of the partnership, we've been really dialing up outreach to a range of different audiences to share the work we're doing and the insights we're generating. Now, this has included robust engagement with both the Calbright team through things like all-team learning opportunities, as well as with external audiences through state and national conferences. For example, the California Community College Systems' own online teaching conference a few months ago, and the Educause Annual Conference coming up this fall, to name just two. Across all these venues, we're seeing really great enthusiasm for the work. Now, beyond these live engagements, we've also been pleased to see earned media in publications like The Chronicle of Higher Education, which have noted the promising results from some of the pilot tests that we've shared with the board. And finally, we've continued to promote the partnership and spread learnings through owned media channels, including a new Impact Top launched earlier this year that highlights different pilots and results we've seen, similar to the content we've brought to the board. As we continue to accumulate evidence on effective ways to support working adult learners in online environments, this kind of external engagement to help others learn about and learn from our work has become an increasing focus of the partnership. Next slide, please. And with that, we've actually wrapped up today's update. Before I conclude, I'd like to offer just a few final thank yous here. And the first one is to the Board of Trustees directly for the ongoing support for this work and for giving us a chance to share a snapshot of the impact that it's having for students. And second, I'd like to thank the many, many members of the Calbright team who've been really pivotal to the success of this work. Now, none of what we shared today would have been possible without a lot of initiative and creativity and hard work from our partners at Calbright, and it's a real privilege to get to work alongside them. At this point, we'd love to open things up for any comments or questions with whatever time we've got remaining. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions or comments regarding the presentation today? Board Member Villa Vicencio, followed by Board Member Haynes.
Great, wonderful. Thank you so much for your presentation. I really appreciate this teaching and learning research that you're conducting. I think it's very innovative. And I love, I do love, as a faculty member myself, I love the proactive rather than reactive approach, and then really inviting students who are experiencing challenges that they are invited to participate in these workshops. Clearly, some students who are either introverted or who are a little bit more shy, right, who don't ask for help readily is a challenge. And so I see that this could possibly sort of change those dynamics that make it easier for students to ask for help. So I don't know if you mentioned this, and I apologize if you mentioned this in your presentation, but I was just curious which courses and disciplines you focused on. And I was also wondering if the faculty who taught these classes encouraged their students to participate or to incentivize them to participate here, because I know I would be totally on board, right, and sort of incentivizing, hey, you know, if you want extra help, you can definitely participate in this program. I may even add a little bit of extra credit there, right, just to even incentivize that. So I was wondering if you took that approach in your research, and I'm happy to learn a little bit more. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Yeah, I will address that in two parts. The first one, very easy, just to circle back to some of the details that I maybe didn't dig into as deeply. Which program did we start out in? We chose to launch the initial pilot in the IT Support Program. That is, as I mentioned, the largest program at Calbright in terms of this department. And so that was the initial focus, mainly from an interest in serving as many students as possible. That also, as I mentioned, is a collaborative design program initially with the instructional faculty involved in the IT Support Program. So that allowed us to really look in and understand at a much deeper level what is the texture of this program, where are the, from the faculty perspective and other folks involved with the program, that they really like us to prioritize. It allowed us to then tend to not just data, but pair that with an understanding of, okay, we see module 3.1 is where the pain point is. What actually is going on in that assignment? What kind of resources are in terms of meeting some of the challenges that students might be facing? We are post-pilot at this point, and so PASS is being scheduled beyond, or excuse me, extended beyond just that initial program. I'm very happy to report. Second question around, you know, incentivizing students to participate and attend. In the initial pilot, we had a lighter touch. Again, we had that control group because we, this was a brand-new approach we'd never tried before, and we really wanted to get the evidence before we went too far to scale and too gung-ho in terms of marketing outreach and incentives. We really did just stick to the email and the text outreach as students were approaching the assignments. Now that we're in the post-pilot phase, it's a whole new ballgame. So there are opportunities, I think, exactly like you mentioned, to, you know, more deeply engage the instructional faculty, have them include this directly into the course shells, into the LMS. Dr. McCarty just mentioned Canvas is opening for IT Support and in other programs as we speak. There's new opportunities, I think, to make these resources directly integrated into the learner pathway so that we're not as reliant on, you know, that our outreach necessarily coming in through email or through direct text communications. And, you know, incentives are one lever, but I think there's a whole set of tools that we can use to try to make as seamless as possible a student moving directly from, you know, the learning experience, maybe running into a tricky assignment and hopping into a space like a pass workshop. And that's something hopefully we'll be able to shed some light on in the months ahead as we get some of those insights from the scaling phase of this pilot. Thanks again for that. Thanks again for that.
Yeah, I look forward to that research in the future. Thank you.
Trustee Haynes, followed by Trustee Williams.
So, I really, really appreciated this presentation. Thank you so much for the update. Would you speak a little bit more how the role of engaging the students in helping to craft what the solution was going to be? And because I don't know that we actually do that in our more traditional colleges in any kind of way. So, what kinds of things did you learn from that that were very, very helpful? Because you had the data that said they were stuck, but obviously that data was not sufficient to necessarily unstick them, correct? So, can you speak a little bit about that?
Absolutely. That's such a great question, and I think across all the work, we go in, initially start the brainstorming, I think, you know, I may have mentioned in a really small group. So, in this case, we had, you know, some of the instructional faculty, maybe some of the support teams involved with the IT Support Program to give us the seeds of ideas, but as early as possible, we do try to actually come up with maybe a quick whiteboard prototype version of what we're thinking about, maybe the shell of a PASS session, not necessarily the full final finished product, and put that in front of a student. So, we were constantly doing student interviews or small focus group discussions where we bring students on, compensate them for their time, maybe 30 minutes, and ask them to sort of weigh in on, you know, how is, how does this idea work? How do you think this might address some of the needs that you had in your own experience? And that student input, in the case of PASS, was super helpful because, you know, the data, of course, can tell us, like I said, maybe assignment 3.1 is where we see a lot of students spending a lot of time, those repeated attempts, or a lot of stall-out or stop-out. But talking to the students and digging into the context, you know, understanding from the faculty, oh, this is an assignment where students have to leave, you know, the original LMS and go into a CompTIA sort of, or platform. Understanding that from the faculty perspective and then hearing from students, why is that challenging? Is that, is it a technical issue? Is it something related to the subject matter? Is it a friction? You know, is it tracking down an extra ID number, whatever it might be? What's confusing about the assignment? What might be helpful to bake in there? So, taking that input in as early as possible and then iterating, 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 iterating. So, I will be the first to tell you that our initial week, we did a soft launch of these past workshops, I think in December of last year, they don't bear a whole lot of resemblance to the final product, and that's very much by design because we're constantly, you know, trying to listen to students, see what's going on, understand what their experience of, you know, the intervention was as early as possible so that we can directly fold that in. The final thing we benefited from here in terms of capturing the student voice was those peer tutors I mentioned. So, these were tutors recruited directly from Calbright's IT Support Program. So, you know, the people we actually had on the front lines, meeting with the students, helping facilitate the workshops, benefited from having been, in a very real sense, you know, the intended beneficiaries of the work itself. And so they could, in a very authentic way, see from the student perspective in a way that, you know, we as the designers, consultants, even the faculty, never really can.
Michael, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we have the amazing factor of having Michael, our IT Support Lead Faculty here, and I just wanted to open the floor for you as well.
Well, Marissa is on the spot. Oh, and now I'm not. Yes, one, 42 came to us, we're very open, and he had some pretty thought, forward-thinking plans, right? We were looking to do something proactive as to reach out to the students. So, he took some of the information that we were already crafting and really expanded it, right, and brought their flavor and their expertise to it. And we started to see a lot of student engagement increase. And to answer one of the trustees' members' question earlier, we did start to promote this from a faculty level because we start to see the matriculation rates really increasing. So, we were jumping on board with, hey, you know, sign up for these tutoring sessions. Have you joined to this? What about PASS? And just like Tom mentioned, with only like 15 to 20% of the students engaging right now, just think when we get 40 to 50 to 60, right? We've had some pretty good certificate completions this year, but we want to double that next year. And I think with Tom's help and ideas 42, I think we can, again, with implementing it into LMS, with the faculty members being a lot more proactive with pushing this agenda, I think we will make huge strides in the following year.
Board Member Williams, then Board Member Jay.
Every time they present, it makes me want to take a class at Calbright. Because, you know, it sounds like the way that I consume information now, I get a lot of stuff through my phone, there's a lot of video stuff, and so I really appreciated like the, to be able to kind of see a snippet of how you're doing the short videos. So, I'm trying to ask two questions related to the incentives. Facebook is starting to do things around monetizing your content, and you can earn stars and stuff like that. Do you ever see a future where students can earn like a spendable token and say use it for, I know with Calbright instructional materials, it's probably not really a thing, but swag or whatever they might be able to use it for. But then the second question is, like, when you master a skill, you need a chance to be able to practice it. And so when you think about like the gig economy, do students, is there a future where students get to promote the skill that they have and then try to receive work like a field practicum or work-based learning or just a way to, you know, or like task work? And you get what I'm saying, especially when you think about students are learning Salesforce or, I think Salesforce is still a thing in there, like, that's a major skill to have. And so just thoughts, and if you don't have all of the answers, it's just what comes to my mind when I hear you present. Thank you.
I love that question. I'd love to jump in on it. A couple of things that are significant, I think, what I love about this work is, this is all the things that we can do, even minus any kind of financial incentive. So, the efficacy of this is really focused on the collaboration with the instructional faculty, with the students themselves, and changing and evolving practice, right? And so, and based on how, just as I loved how you said, processing information, how students actually engage in the learning activity. So, the best part about this phase of this work is that it focuses in on just the core experiences. What can we build into the system that drives these outcomes in that way? So, it doesn't preclude the opportunity for incentives in the future, but it also points to the fact that it's maybe not even necessary or the most important thing when we're talking about the foundational design. So, I will just say that, that piece of thing. And you said something second, Joseph, can you just repeat it around the work-based learning?
Yeah, because you master a skill and then how do you get a chance to go use it?
Yeah. So, a couple of things that I love about the introduction and the incorporation of the Excel tutors. So, this is a very powerful thing, like if you know Candace Steele out of Stanford, who specializes in teaching and learning science, one of the things she has famously said is that you know you've learned something when you can teach somebody how to do it. And I just wanted to focus in on the kind of power of that moment because that is what our Excel tutors have the capability to do. So, what we, what it allows them to do is not just practice the skills earned in Calbright and that they've learned in Calbright, but it allows them to engage with other learners in a way that supports the peer effects of that interaction or near-peer effects of that interaction, but also allows them to practice their skills. So, we're finding that's a really important part of what we've supported and built into the experience at Calbright. And it is also true, you know, not just, that is not the only place where folks can get access to the demonstration and practice of skills. This whole area of more opportunities to have applied learning are an embedded part of what Michael and other parts of the faculty team continuously think about in terms of strengthening and building out more applied experiences across various programs. So, I will say that that work is pretty remarkable. Our faculty do incredible work in this area, and our work in career services and also on the workforce strategy side of things is trying to grow the scope of opportunities available to learners.
I just wanted to say, as a student, I loved hearing, especially the quick videos and how innovative all of this work is. I could see how this could help me as a student if I was a Calbright student, and also how it can help so many of my peers. I especially love the mentioning of peer-to-peer tutoring. That was something that I did at my college, and I enjoyed it, being a tutor and also receiving tutoring. And so I just wanted to applaud your work and say how wonderful it is to hear.
Board Member Escobar Correia.
Thanks so much. I was wondering if, I just want to say, I appreciate your energy and the enthusiasm you bring to this work and the creativity as Michael was mentioning, just, I think that's really important to, as we're, as we're trying to really push the bounds, boundaries and try to just get our students to succeed. I wanted to ask a question just about the videos and how you got to the videos that you did. I can't remember, I'm sorry, and maybe you flagged it the last time you presented to us a few months back, but yeah, I was just wondering about, you know, how you settled on these short-form videos, if there was like a process, you could say a little more about that, that'd be great.
Yes, yes. And Marissa or someone, please cut me off because I could talk about the short-form videos for the rest of this, this board meeting, which would be a joy for me, but you have many other items on the agenda. But here goes. That came out of one of the collaborative design sprints, and Michael, it's so nice to see you. I had no idea you'd be here, but I mentioned that collaborative design sprint. Michael was the core of that work that we did last year. The PASS workshops were very much a gift from Michael at the very outset that we were able to take and run with. So, I'm glad you were able to be here for that, Michael, and see them come to fruition. But videos, we started, we started a design sprint last year with a group of success counselors. So, these are members of the Counseling Faculty at Calbright. And among the ideas that we came up with out of that was this, you know, idea that maybe what we need to do in an all-online and asynchronous environment is find ways to create the, something similar to the kind of emotional connection and engagement you get from an in-person face-to-face interaction. We thought video was important for Calbright to have, and of course, it's a piece of Calbright and always has been, but we wanted to not have, I don't know, college videos feel institutional, cold, or distant. And so we thought, why not lean into this kind of granier, you know, Instagram reels, TikTok-y format that certainly is only becoming, I think, more and more common among modern learners, more and more familiar and kind of intuitive in terms of a media or a channel. And so we kind of ran with that and said, all right, let's constrict ourselves to like Twitter-length here, we've got 60 seconds, we've got the vertical format, we're not going to spend googobs on hiring professional videographers or anything, we're going to use sort of freeware to see what we can produce. We then thought, all right, let's, we've never done this before, let's think of three very different types of student engagement behaviors, different resources, processes, and try to layer these in to do a really broad test of, you know, where do we see that this is effective, and importantly, where maybe isn't it effective? And so we came up with three different videos at the outset for that pilot. One of them was focused on helping students understand the enrollment process and sort of complete the different steps involved to actually get their enrollment agreement signed, complete their first assignment, become a fully enrolled student. The second one was really about establishing an interpersonal connection with a faculty member, the counselor. So, that was a 60-second video, not about, hey, here's 900 different things about Calbright, but here's me, I'm Tom, and I like snowboarding, and I like, you know, reading haiku, whatever it was. Each counselor could bring sort of their own personality to it. And the final one was about spotlighting career services resources, so more of an asynchronous resource that students could tap into. And across the board, I won't go into it, A, because I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but B, because I'll spare you all the recitation of results here, but across the board, we saw really great, you know, numbers in terms of helping students complete the enrollment process, driving meaningful increases in the number of students actually connecting with an academic success counselor, and the huge spike in the number of students downloading and accessing some of those resources we highlighted with respect to career services. We can absolutely follow up with more information about, you know, at a greater level of detail what those were, videos in particular, what they highlighted and the results that we saw. But I think the takeaway was, this can be a really great way to get students engaged, build that motivation, which is the first step towards getting them deeply plugged into the Calbright ecosystem, particularly early on, in a way that can hopefully carry them forward, help them make that first step towards, you know, the deeper engagement with the college over the longer term.
Tom, I also wanted, Tom, I think it's also useful to highlight one other takeaway from that, which was that this does not mean short-form video is a primary communication tool across every experience and interaction in the, in the college. Because I think we like, we love to jump onto the tactic. And so I think the point that I think was important that you highlighted in the, in the last presentation you did on this was to sort of say, each time you consider that short-form video as a mechanism to do it, what are the processes you should go through to assess whether it is, in fact, the right medium and engagement tool for the behavior that you're trying to support or engage in?
That's an important.
It's a nice, yeah, it's a nice teaser, right, to get them to the next stage, which is the deeper level engagement, right? And it feels very just cool and accessible and like, yeah, you want to know more, right? So, it just seems great. Thank you.
100%. And I think that actually is really, Ajita, thank you for bringing that up because one of the key outputs, I think, of that pilot, I don't want to detract from the results, which I think were very encouraging. They drove the engagement, it got students to take action. But we had goals of trying to educate with those videos as well, you know, we thought, to what extent can we address, you know, confusion that we know students have about service X versus service Y? And what we found was that, you know, short-form video isn't necessarily the best way to educate people. So, don't think, let's just turn an entire Calbright program into a series of short-form videos that are TikTok-y and fun. It'd be great at getting eyeballs, it might be great at getting students to make that emotional connection, but it's not a substitute for, you know, every interaction at Calbright, particularly when it comes to learning, information retention. So, I think that limiting principle actually was very important, not to detract from, you know, the positive results we saw in terms of engagement.
Board Member Brown.
So, this question may not be able to be answered today, it's more of an overall concept that Board Member Villa Vicencio made me think about. In terms of those workshops that you were talking about earlier, basically, anything we put in place that we see helps students, but not many students participate. How can we look into creating an opt-out instead of opt-in sort of structure or a structure in which it's normed, that that's what you do? I'm thinking back to my time at UCLA. When I was in community college, the tutoring was just drop-in. When I went to UCLA, they had a targeted program for underrepresented students that when you signed up for tutoring, you signed up for a schedule for the entire term and you would go every week. So, I'm just sort of thinking about, not just specific to those workshops, but in general, if we see something, we see it's working, it's really helping students, they don't know, they don't sign up, how do we get all those little heads you had on the, on the slide to just start to see it as a, as a normal practice? And so that's a, it's a bigger question that I don't need an answer right now, but I just wanted to put it out there.
I might step in on that too. Just to say that we have Professor Richard Arum on the call too, who I know has studied this, looked at the differential uptake and impact of that. And so, just Board Member Brown, thank you for the question. It's something that we think about a lot, and it's something where we have some of the foremost experts here with us. So, Richard, I don't know if there's anything you briefly want to say, or just know that we very much appreciate that and can pick up on that too.
Yeah, I think the, just the important point is to continue, the need to continue to iterate on whatever is developed and monitor its, its take-up. And so, over time, I do think you want to drive to greater engagement and make things, certain things mandatory or opt-out rather than opt-in. But again, this is a process that requires iteration over time.
Can I, I'm going to add one thing, and maybe Dean Arum or Ben, if you want to weigh in on this one. This idea of the power of the default option and the default choice, I think, also has to be managed very carefully. When we think about what we're cultivating in our learners, it is also empowerment and agency. So, to keep default options to things that make the experience for learners more frictionless feels really important, but to be able for students to be coached and supported into making their own executive function decisions and their own choices around how they engage and spend their time, I also think is, is an important piece to balance. So, I'll just say that, but I know Dean Arum and Ben, you guys have worked directly in the applications based on this, Tom, I think you have as well, but curious on your perspectives on that. Like, for example, we've seen, when I was in the federal government, we spent a lot of time on default options for things like auto-populating the FAFSA or annual enrollment things where people fall out of income-based repayment because they aren't annually recertifying those types of things, those things that create friction. those things that create friction because of the burdens and process versus, you know, taking away active decision-making. So I think it's an interesting balance question.
I would just add very briefly, thanks so much, Ajita. I agree with everything you said. I think the board member's example of tutoring is actually a fantastic one, where if we change the, if we make it very easy to engage with tutoring, either by having a kind of sticky schedule, as the board member described, that the student commits to at the start, or even, you know, you could imagine figuring out ways, even in the Calbright context, to kind of bring tutors into the learning experience from day one versus tutoring being something the student has to actively seek out. It's still up to the student to, you know, decide whether to exercise agency and choice and whether pursue, to pursue that support. But the more we can make things easy for students to act on, it seems like a simple rule of thumb, but in fact, I think underlies a lot of the successful behavioral science interventions without, again, to Ajita's very important point, without constraining or limiting students' agency and choice.
Board member Villa Vicencio.
Thank you, President Costa. Just a quick point, I think we're already having this discussion, right? And I'm seeing it from an equity lens here and making sure that our students obviously have access to this, but are, we're also cognizant about, obviously, their busy schedules as well. And so I do appreciate in your presentation sort of asynchronous sort of model to this. But, you know, being able to obviously, and I'm sure you've already thought about this, understanding our students, their challenges, their very busy schedules, and seeing, obviously, how you adapt to that and what that model obviously looks like from an equity lens. So this, this program is accessible to everyone, I think is very important. And so I just want to highlight, obviously, with Vision 2030 and our, our focus on equity, that cannot be understated. Thank you.
Board member Epstein.
Yeah, it's been a while since we first started this contract, and AI has advanced quite a bit in those 18 months or however long it's been. And I was wondering, I mean, these workshops are human-being led, right? So, so this is a high-touch, you know, expensive maintenance sort of thing. And if you did expand this to, you know, a vast majority of Calbright students, are there technology solutions that would make it easier to manage such a bigger caseload? And would it be as effective as the human-led enterprise you've got now?
I might make one overall statement, and then I'd welcome everyone. So board member Epstein, very much appreciate that. We are thinking through the tools competition that Ajita mentioned at the beginning and through many other levers about AI, but AI with a focus on equity, focus on serving our students well, focus on not replacing our human interaction, but thinking about the places where AI can most remove barriers or accelerate progress and help our people focus on the places that they most want to focus on, where that interaction is prioritized for our students as well. And so we are absolutely, we are looking across the field. We have, in fact, we met last week about a potential design sprint that could involve AI. We are engaging experts in the field, but we are also being really thoughtful and reflective to not just think of it as an automatic solution, but see where is it really best suited across the student journey to remove those barriers or accelerate outcomes or to really support and enhance what our amazing team, faculty, staff, and others want to do on behalf of students and to help them be able to prioritize that by leveraging AI. I welcome everyone else to add.
No, I think that's right. And I might even lean in to say, like, I think we exercise great caution when we think about replacing human interaction with AI technologies without a very thoughtful approach to it. So I think we all recognize the excitement and the potential, especially a lot of people on the efficiency side. I think in this moment in time, at least institutionally, we're focusing on its application in the context of, you know, sort of backend efficiencies. How do we make processes more streamlined? How do we take the rote work out of people's day-to-day schedules so that they can focus their human potential and time contributing in the best ways that they can to the college? And that's true of students as well. So I think there is something profoundly important about maintaining the direct human connection that we have, particularly as a digitally-enabled institutions. I think it's an extra responsibility that we bear. And so I think we would, we would be very cautious about trying to gain efficiencies by replacing human connection in ways that are still pretty untested.
As a faculty member, I would have to agree wholeheartedly with Ajita. But as a techno geek, I think AI could be used, excuse me, artificial intelligence, sorry. Sorry, artificial intelligence or machine learning could be used as a tool, right? And if we use that tool to help guide and move our students into some of these programs that IDEA 42 is, is talking about, like a chatbot that sits on the side of our LMS that then uses what Ajita's talking about, the backend algorithm. If a student is not getting through that particular module, then that chatbot could come up and say, hey, I see that you're having some issues right now. How can I help you move you forward? Let me, let me assign you to this pass group, or let's, let's set you up with an instructor who can help you. And to go back to a question that was asked earlier, I think if we had like floating cohorts, we have students that come in 52 weeks out of the year. So if we assign them to a cohort that they can move in and out of that has an IDEA 42 backend module on it and some sort of technology, I think we can then move some of these students around through the program, but also get them help and, and some of the guidance that they need as they go forward, so they don't seem like they're on an island, but they do have a sense of community. And then they can go in and out of a cohort as they progress throughout the, through the program.
Great, I don't see any other board comments. Is there any members of the public that wish to comment or have a question on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation, everyone. We appreciate it. Next up in our information and reports, we have a standing item 5.2, Reports on Contracts and Purchases, presented by our Chief Financial Officer. Colleagues, we all have the materials that list each of the contracts and purchases. So I'm going to ask if anybody has any questions or comments on the agenda item. Seeing none, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we have our constituency group reports. We'll invite Mr. Stewart back, President of the CalBright Academic Senate, to provide his report.
Good morning, President Costa and Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. As you may know, my name is Michael Stewart, now the president of CalBright's Academic Senate. I am pleased to share with you our acronym-free updates on our faculty programs and recent policy approvals. With some exciting news regarding our faculty achievements, three of our colleagues have been appointed to prestigious statewide committees, a testament to their leadership and dedication to advancing education in California. And we aim to encourage all of our faculty to participate and serve at the state level. First off, Elizabeth Biddlecombe has been selected to serve on the Academic Center for California Community Colleges Online Education Committee for the term of 2024 to 2025. Her expertise in online learning will significantly benefit the wider community. Next, Alex Mata has been selected to serve on the California Community Colleges Library and Learning Resource Program Advisory Committee. Alex's appointment highlights libraries and learning resources' significant role in enhancing student success. And lastly, I, Michael Stewart, has been appointed to the Non-Credit Committee of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges for the same 24-25 term. I'm also a part of the Chancellor's Professional Development and Artificial Intelligence Committee and the Fraud Prevention Committee. Our faculty is excited to contribute to CalBright's growing commitment to serve at the state level. These opportunities underscore our faculty's significant contributions to the academic landscape across the state. Next up, we have our program updates. I am thrilled to announce the successful rollout of the Canvas Learning Management System, bringing, beginning with our data analysis course. And this marks a key milestone in enhancing our digital learning environment. Following this successful launch, we are preparing to roll out our cybersecurity course on the same platform with the IT Support and Network Technology Courses to follow shortly. This phased implementation ensures that our students have access to a streamlined, accessible, and efficient learning platform, enabling them to strive, or to thrive, sorry, in their educational journey. In terms of policy updates, I am really pleased to announce that the Academic Senate has recently approved the CalBright College Academic Integrity Policies, including a new guidelines on the use of artificial intelligence. These policies are critical for maintaining academic integrity and respectful, positive learning environment. The Code of Conduct accompanying these policies outlines expectations for behavior and online interactions, ensuring that all community members engage with other ethically and courteously, courteously, sorry. And this approval reflects our commitment to upholding the highest standards of integrity while ensuring compliance with relevant laws. These guidelines will create a supportive academic environment where students can excel. In conclusion, CalBright's faculty continuously works hard to support our students through leadership roles at the state level, the launch of cutting-edge learning platforms like Canvas, and the approval of forward-thinking policies that help safeguard academic integrity. We're proud of our process and look forward to the months ahead. And like we discussed earlier, CalBright College is ripping the Band-Aid off of traditional education, and we're proud to be a part of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your report. We appreciate it. Next up, we have our next report, Item 6.2, with the CalBright Faculty Association Report, presented by Cindy Carney.
Good morning, thank you. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and esteemed members of the board. I am Cindy Carney, President of the CalBright Faculty Association. I'm happy to be here today to provide you with some updates. I'm excited to share that Ben Ringenberg, Ringenberg, excuse me, was recently elected as Vice President of the CalBright Faculty Association. We are happy to have him as part of the team. Ben has also agreed to join the bargaining team along with Kelly Corbesario. I would also like to report that CFA has submitted our Sunshine Document in today's agenda that presents our proposals for our upcoming successor agreement bargaining. We look forward to further working with CalBright administration to establish mutually agreeable terms. Thank you, that is the end of my report.
Thank you so much for your report. We appreciate it. That marks the end of our constituency group reports. It's now time for the public forum portion of our Agenda 7.1. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, well, thank you, colleagues. The time is 11:48, and the Board of Trustees has now completed all of the business before this body,